Good evening. I'd like to call to order the December 9, 2009 Planning Commission meeting. At this time, I'll make note that Beverly Barre is not here. All other members are present, acceptance of the minutes from the November 4, 2009 meeting.
Second?
I'm trying to... Motion by Bob Nance for approval, second by Sherri Slimon. Any opposed? Motion carries. Public comment period. Anyone wishing to come forward and discuss any item not on the agenda, please come forward, and you'll have three minutes. And just for informational purposes, some of the audience may be new. We will do zoning right after the Planning Commission meeting. Okay, no one wishing to discuss any topic on planning? Not on the agenda? Public comment period is closed. Item number five, public hearing to consider the following family partition. The Ellie Sewell Jr. property tracks 14C 2A and 14A 2B. Ms. Jackson?
Ellen Jackson with McLean &amp; Associates. We've addressed the comments for this family partition, and we're asking for your approval.
Commissioners, have any questions, comments?
Ellen, I noticed there is a camper cover and another structure behind it that are not shown on this plat. Are they out of the servitude? Do you know?
It's shown on my copy. I don't know. They were submitted after the comments initially, so...
Can you put it... Yeah, you're gonna put it under there so we can see it?
Yeah. Right there. That was the one you're referring to, right here.
Okay, so then the shed is in the private servitude. No, excuse me.
It angles to get out of it.
Okay, so that's the drainage servitude over on the edge? Okay.
If I'm looking at your survey on the screen correctly, then your 25-foot building line kinda nips the corner of that existing residence.
Well, usually when you re-subdivide, and if it's something that's existing with the requirements of the building line, it usually... Sometimes it cuts like midways apart from me because that's the required building line, but probably referring to new construction.
I'm not comfortable. I mean, you're essentially saying we can create a non-conformity, and I've always had an issue with that. But we'll leave that for discussion with staff in a minute.
So they're not gonna be removed?
What, the red?
The shed and... What, it's a shed and what's the other one?
It's a motorhome cover.
It's a motorhome cover.
Any other questions, comments at this time? All right. Hearing none. I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward, and you'll have three minutes. No one wishing to comment. Public hearing is closed. Comments, questions by commissioners?
Can you put that back up, please? So you have the shed and part of that cover that's also in a 15-foot drainage servitude, correct?
It is, but that cover can be removed if... You know, right now, in that drainage servitude, there's nothing there. It's just a requirement for the ordinance. So, I mean, it's not like a ditch is already there. If a ditch is needed to put there, I guess it will be moved.
I guess the concern that I have is this... What you're showing here, the 25-foot building line is nowhere close to the residence. What I'm looking at is that...
But if you're looking over there, they moved it over.
But if I'm looking at this, it's moved over.
Staff? I have a question to staff. I mean, we're gonna establish a 15-foot drainage servitude in favor of Ascension Parish with a known structure on it. Is your recommendation remain the same as what's in the package?
This, like you, this is the first time I'm seeing this plat, and so the staff recommendation would probably be to ensure that that 25-foot building line does not clip the building. And, I mean, once again, if it's possible to put a note on the plat that states, should at a future date, the drainage servitude needs to be utilized by the used Ascension Drainage, that the building can be moved, or if you just wanna make a stipulation, the building has to be moved prior to the plat being signed, I think there's probably two ways to skin the cat. If it's not being used today for anything, I guess the question, do we know... I mean, it says to be used for sewer effluent line. Can you put the sewer effluent line in there if the building doesn't move?
Well, wait a minute. Hang on for a second. You're telling me you just seen this for the first time, so staff...
I'm just seeing this one. I asked Jeff if he'd seen it, and he doesn't recall seeing it either. So whether or not it got lost in the translation, I don't know. This is the first time I'm seeing it.
Ms. Jackson, this revised plan that you're showing us on the monitor, you submit this to staff?
I did.
When?
It was due like on a Monday, and I turned in like on the Thursday before that. I think you were out there maybe.
Well, this is the original one she submitted. That's the revision she submitted.
Well, she prepared.
Yeah, but it totally changed. It's not just a little change.
Yeah. Ms. Jackson, I would...
I think we should see it. I think we need to... I think we need another month to get a copy of the new plat and go over it again.
And let staff review it.
I would suggest that you consider deferring this matter until next month so staff can evaluate this thing and make a formal recommendation.
Could you come up and introduce yourself, please?
My name is Billy Hollis, and I just wanted to tell you that all I'm trying to do is get my son a place to live. Those two buildings have got to be moved. Anytime soon, I can move them, you know. I'd hate to because one of them's a little shop, the other one's just a cover for a camper. And he's trying to get in a trailer moved in there within the next month because of a hardship problem.
Well, Ellen, do you know why the drainage servitude was moved to that side? On our plat, it's on the other side.
Because it just seemed like it was simple to just run just one, because it went the other way and then came and, you know, followed that street. It was, you know, I just wanted to do like a straight shot. But I can put it back on the other side. I mean, it's a drain. But even if they have to put it over here, and then let it come.
This is okay, what they're showing us.
Well, if you looked at the property on the east side, it's all trees and a real nice hedge. It'll never be a drainage servitude. I mean, it's very, very nice and very pretty, so it would never be a drainage servitude. That's why I wonder why they didn't just leave it on the other side.
So what you're saying is this plat that we're looking at is okay?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm just saying, the one we have, the drainage servitude is on the west side.
No, that's what I'm saying. This one that we have looks okay, but theirs doesn't.
But you understand the Holly Lane's all the way to the property line.
I'm sorry?
Hollis Lane, the proposed Hollis Lane is...
On the edge, right.
On the edge. So all of those trees and everything that's there would...
Well...
Theoretically.
Theoretically, yes, but there is a driveway that goes up now, and I'm sure they're just gonna use the driveway.
And extend it.
Exactly. But I know Mr. Hollis is in a hurry, but I still think we need a... I still think we should have a correct plat.
Well, the safer course of action would be... I'd like to see the plat that we're actually gonna be voting on.
Right, I agree.
Right now, we've got two plats here, and how we got two plats, I don't know. I don't care. I just wanna see the plat that we're actually gonna be voting on. If it takes deferring in a month to do that, then let's do that. That way, we know what we're looking at, and staff knows what they're looking at.
Okay. What is the wish of the commission?
Did you have a public hearing?
Yes.
I'm gonna make a motion to defer this until the January meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to defer until the January meeting. Any opposition? Item number 6A, Perkins Oaks, Part II, Lot 193.
Good evening. Matt Moore with Key Design Build. I'm here on behalf of Dr. Jeremy Moore. This is for a servitude revocation that I'm asking you to pass.
Commissioners, have any questions, comments?
Now, why do you want to remove this servitude on what would be the... How do I get my west side of that? More or less the west side of that lot?
The... This was an existing residential home that got rezoned. It's gonna be a family dental clinic now. The plans were engineered to lay the building out per the new zoning building setbacks. There was an old servitude for the Perkins Oaks subdivision that didn't get picked up in the engineering phase, and then when we went to do the slab survey, it did get picked up. So as of right now, we have a building that's ready for a foundation pour that we can't, you know, proceed, and that's why we're asking to adjust the servitude.
What are the other building setback lines on the adjacent properties?
I'm not sure. I mean, as far as Perkins Oaks, those are residential properties where this is a commercial property.
Well, the reason I'm asking is I happen to know that Belgrove subdivision, Lot 1, has a house on it, and we need to maintain the proper setbacks to the property line so it doesn't crowd up against the neighbors, regardless of what's on your property.
Well, I haven't encroached any building setbacks.
Well, I'm asking if there's gotta be a building setback on that side of the property, and there's nothing shown on this plat.
Okay, I can't answer that.
I mean, there is a dashed line here, and if that's it...
No, the dashed line is... I'm sorry. Let me see if I understand. You've got a 15-foot drainage servitude, but your rear setback is only 10 feet?
Rear setback is 15 feet.
The rear setback of your building is 15 feet?
Correct. The side building is 10 feet.
Well, okay, so then... We're not the Board of Adjustment. We can't grant a waiver, a setback waiver? I mean, you know...
I'm not asking for a building setback. I'm asking for a servitude to be revoked. The servitude would go from 15 feet to 10 feet. This is an old servitude, and I have letters from all the utility companies that says that there's no utilities, you know, in this old servitude, and this is a high side of the Perkins Oaks servitude. And CSRS, who's the, you know, serves the drainage for Ascension Parish, did the drainage on this property. And so, you know, I've eliminated any drainage issues, being that it's a commercial property. And being on the high side, you know, there's no drainage issues whatsoever.
So all you're asking for is to have the 15-foot servitude reduced to the same as the 10-foot yard, side yard building line?
That's correct.
Well, I wanna go back to the building line thing because this plat doesn't show a building line on that side of the property at all. And granted, we don't grant variances, but I'm concerned that you're gonna need to go before the Board of Adjustment.
Well, I'm not adjusting a building line.
Are you gonna put... Well, if you've got wood forms, that's where you're gonna put your slab, right?
That's correct, but it's on the appropriate building line.
Why doesn't this plat show a building line?
It does. It shows...
Not on that side.
Yes, it's showing a 10-yard side yard building line on the plat.
Was that what was originally there? Or is that what you're showing now?
That's what's... Well, yes, I mean, that's what's per the zoning, and it's... Yes. I mean, there is a 10-yard side building line, and that's...
10 foot.
Yeah, 10 feet, and that's where the forms sit. The only thing for, you know, for discussion is the servitude.
Well, so you're treating the property line that it joins a common property line with Lot 1 in Belgrove as your side, not your rear. You're treating the one next to Lot 192?
That's correct.
I would be interested in hearing if the residents from Belgrove subdivision, Lot 1, are here, if they had any comment.
Good leading. Let's go to public hearing.
Yeah.
Well, they're not. I can answer that question for you.
How do you know?
I live in Belgrove.
Okay.
I know. That's my concern about this setback over there and the neighboring property there because it abuts up to that, and I want staff to... I would like to address this to staff. Staff, can you tell me what the original building setback was for Perkins Oaks, Part II, Lot 193 was?
I would assume that based on the way that neighborhood is laid out, that that was originally a rear setback, based on the fact that the structure that was on that property accessed Live Oak Drive and not Perkins Road.
But the house did face Perkins Road.
The house did face Perkins Road.
Yes, it did.
So was the access off of Perkins or off of Live Oak Drive?
The... Was it Red Oak? It was off of Red Oak, but the house faced Perkins.
Yeah, and that's another problem. They've got this street mislabeled. It's actually Red Oak, not Live Oak. So you're thinking that what would be the side setback is correct for the neighborhood, or what was originally there, but you don't know for sure?
I don't know. I mean, to me, when I just look at this plat, I would've assumed if a house was on there, it fronted on Live Oak, Red Oak Drive, and the garage was off of Red Oak, and the driveway was off of Red Oak, so that would be my front setback. They've applied the front setback to Perkins Road to ensure that they are far enough back from any future construction. Therefore, when you do that at the front, the opposite's the rear, and the other two are your sides. However...
I just wanna make sure that they're not encroaching to what the original side, call it side or rear setback, whatever it was, that they're not encroaching that without proper procedures.
Right.
Are you planning on having any access off of Red Oak?
Yes, and I've... I mean, I have DOTD permits and everything, and it's permitted properly.
But, I mean, Perkins is a state. Red Oak isn't.
Excuse me?
Perkins is a state road. Red Oak is not. So you don't need a DOTD permit for Red Oak. I'm not asking about Perkins. I'm asking about Red Oak.
Okay.
Are you gonna have access off of Red Oak?
Yes.
And nothing off of Perkins?
Nothing off Perkins, no.
Any other comments at this time?
I got a question for staff.
Okay.
Ricky, this lot is zoned MU2?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Lance, but I'm pretty sure that this came in before we changed the home occupation standards, where you could construct commercial development in residential zoning categories as long as you did not exceed the 1,500 square foot maximum.
Well, they're over that.
Right.
But so this property's still sold residential? Right, but it's a commercial use. So those...
It's a commercial use, so underneath the tables, underneath "commercial," the setbacks, and we're at a planning commission. I mean, I'm trying to be, but we're not talking about setbacks. He's requesting to reduce or revocate the servitude, but it's 10 feet on the side and 15 in the back. That's the setback.
For commercial use?
For commercial use, even in a residential.
And for residential use?
No, for residential, it's 20 and 5.
For the side, it's 5?
Yes, only 5 on the side.
When do they get the variance on the square footage?
I don't remember. Probably a year or so at least. I know they've been working on it for a while.
Okay.
It's been at least a year. It came before the variance board twice. The first time, they went from, if my memory serves me, from 1,500 to 1,800 or 1,850, and they came back and tried to get more and were denied for the additional. But I know they have at least 1,800. If I remember right, it's 1,800 or 1,850.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no other comments this time, I'll open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on this issue, please come forward. You have three minutes. No one wishing to come forward. Public hearing is closed. Any further comments, questions?
If this was happening next door to me, I would be okay with it, so I would... I'll make a motion to approve the revocation.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve by Sherri Slimon, seconded by Howard Dalton. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Glad we got that cleared up. All right. Item number 7A, Wayne Floyd Road Extension.
I guess that this item came before us, and we've had several discussions with DPW, and that's where the staff recommendation came from. So if you've read that, Ricky DiArmond's here to present his case, his side of the story, and the staff recommendation is what we came to, is our conclusion. But from our understanding, it was brought before a councilman and then to DPW to consider, so it's here for your consideration tonight.
Any commissioners, questions, comments?
I'd like to at least hear what Ricky's got to tell us, Ricky DiArmond's got to tell us about that right now.
All right, Ricky.
Well, we looked at this road to be taken in due to the fact that some residents are requesting that we extend the road. The road, when it was initially put down, the road bed was put down the whole entire length, and we're asking you to take in tonight. But for some reason, which I think was why they only blacktopped a portion of it, probably is where they only had residents at the time that it was taken in. But this road was accepted in the Unitary Road Plan back in 1990. The whole length of the road was put in at that time, but they didn't asphalt the whole road. At the time, in the Unitary Road Plan, it showed 1,210 feet was accepted, but actually on ground, it's 2,182 feet. So really, we got a cleanup item, about 72 feet, that we need to consider to take in. Basically, it falls under the maintenance system because it was asphalted further than what it should've been at that time. But we're asking that you accept. DPW's recommendation from the DPW directors, asking you to accept the 510 feet to complete this road out.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
So you're okay with the financial burden that's in place on the parish?
DPW director's recommendation is accepted, so I'm sure he is.
There are houses on this section of gravel road. I didn't go out there.
There's one house that just got put back there.
It's a trailer.
Right.
No trailer.
And asphalt don't go all the way to the end of the property line on that portion of the road.
And the trailer is to the, you know, right to the edge of the asphalt, roughly.
Right.
Ricky, I respect y'all's opinion, but I just have a problem with accepting something where there's no houses when we're turning down other applicants who come ask us to accept their roads when there are houses on their road. I really... Personally, I cannot do that. I just don't think it's fair.
The parish is making a big push to take in all gravel roads and get them finalized and done and completed, you know? But it's strictly up to y'all. We just bring it to you.
Will this obligate the parish to asphalt the gravel portions?
I'm sure it's in the plans in the future, you know?
No, but will this action tonight encumber the parish to actually asphalt it?
No, no. We can maintain it as a gravel road.
I guess my concern is the staff recommendation, the extension of Wayne Floyd Road is not in compliance with the district attorney's interpretation of the criteria for taking in private roads into the parish system, and like Sherri referred to, we've turned down a lot of roads.
But on the other hand, we've taken in a lot of roads that didn't meet the criteria. That's one that's close to meeting the criteria.
Ricky, I think when you say that, I wish you... This commission didn't necessarily recommend the acceptance of those roads.
Well, I'm not blaming anyone. I'm just saying it happens.
I don't think we've taken in any in the last three years.
We don't... We can't tell the council what they are and aren't gonna do. They're the governing authority. They're gonna make that decision. All we can do is make a recommendation, and we have an established criteria, and staff has said this does not meet that criteria.
The only criteria that it doesn't meet is the hard surface. It has a 40-foot servitude right away. The road bed is in place. It has drainage on both sides of the road. There's only one item missing on it as far as meeting the criteria.
But the condition of that road bed is highly suspect, I have to say. And you got a lot of trees you'd have to cut down to really get the drainage functioning pretty well.
And I don't think that 40-foot is not correct either.
I have maps, plats that show 40-foot right away.
Yeah, but it's not... That doesn't meet the criteria right there.
It does under the district attorney's opinion before 1993. That's what the opinion was based on. Any road in the system prior to 1993.
Well, at this point, I'm of a very strong mind to adhere to the district attorney's recommendation so that we don't open Pandora's box. I mean, if we've got a criteria, we need to try to stay with it unless there's some compelling reason not to, we go against the district attorney's recommendation. Because no matter what we do, I'm of the strong opinion that if we stay within legal counsel's recommendation, that provides a certain umbrella should there ever be some ramifications to the actions of this board. If we step outside the district attorney's recommendations, then we're assuming a certain liability that I don't think we should do. liability that I don't think we should do.
No other comments this time, I'll open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and talk on the item, please come forward. No one wishing to comment, public hearing is closed. Any other comments, questions by commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
I, I think that there's a, uh, there's at least a little bit of, um, of a corrective effort that needs to take place here. So, I'm gonna make a motion that we recommend acceptance of the portion of the five hundred feet that meets criteria, but only the portion that meets criteria.
And that's the seventy-two?
Seventy-two feet.
The seventy-two feet.
Right.
But I don't know that it's exactly seventy feet or seventy-two feet, I've heard different numbers. So, I make a motion that we recommend, that we recommend acceptance of the portion of, of the forty-foot servitude that meets criteria.
Before we go any further, could I ask staff to comment on that type of, uh, motion as far as a partial acceptance of this road, specifically legal? Are we committed for all or?
No, you can partially accept, 'cause what they're saying, it, it's already been accepted, but for cleanup, Matt, um, from what I'm reading, it's just for cleanup that where you can accept that seventy-two that they've been maintaining?
Okay, so as long as you're comfortable with it.
She's right.
I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, I second Julio's motion.
I would have a motion to accept the portion of the road that meets the criteria by Julio Dumas, seconded by Sherri Slimon. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Can we just clarify the total in the motion, I think that would help also?
Yeah, and, uh, does that, does that go to?
It's the portion of the five hundred and twelve feet that meets the criteria, 'cause I don't know how much of it meets criteria.
With the seventy-two feet being accepted, it'll go to twenty-one eighty-two, which is what's actually asphalted at this time.
So, it's seventy-two feet, seventy-two foot of asphalt.
Seventy-two feet.
Okay, clarification.
I will make a motion to reconsider my motion. I need your second.
All right, I'll oppose reconsider of the motion.
What'd you read, the motion?
Motion carries, all right.
All right, the set, the new motion.
New motion.
The new motion is, is that we make a recommendation to accept the seventy-two feet that meet criteria that if, in addition to what's already accepted, for a total of twenty-one eighty-two feet.
Thank you.
And I second.
All right, motion by Julio Dumas, seconded by Sherri Slimon to add the additional seventy-two feet to the, to the road. Any opposition? Motion carries, and this is just a recommendation to the council, correct? Tell me, so it goes to council, I mean, yeah. All right, item number eight A was deleted, so eight B, Elmo Cannon Property, tracks A1A, A1B, A1C, A1D. Ms. Jackson.
Ellen Jackson again with Michaeline and Associates. We've addressed all comments for this simple, for this simple division, asking for your approval.
Questions, comments by commissioners? No comments or questions at this time, open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward, and you'll have three minutes. No one wishing to come forward, public comment period is closed. Any questions, comments by commissioners?
The trailer in track A2 that's in the, um, drainage servitude, are you gonna move it?
Can, can I make a comment on that? Um, the concern there is because that, that trailer is in the drainage servitude, um, but they added, and again, like the previous plat that had the, the old copy, you have, again, an old one, I'm not sure what happened there, um, but they added a fifteen-foot drainage servitude on the opposite side of that property line. So, on the plat that staff reviewed and recommended approval, there's a, basically a thirty-foot drainage servitude centered on that property line. Um, they're, you know, getting around the concern that the, uh, trailer's in the drainage servitude. There's no ditch on either, in either one of those places now, um, so, and we discussed that with drainage whenever we were looking for a solution to that, and they were okay with that.
So, the one I have is not what we're voting on approval?
I'm afraid not.
That's starting to be a concern to me, all right? Next question. Uh, the, um, Elmo Cannon Extension Road is already there, but it's obviously not in the property. Would they have to relocate it?
The revised plat that we discussed in our meeting last week, that staff recommended approval on, the private servitude of passage was revised to provide a continuous twenty-foot servitude off of that road. On the one you're looking at, I think it still has the crook in the, in the servitude that makes a little bottleneck, um, so that too was corrected on the, the revised plat.
Okay, last item, since Lance took off on us, uh, that mobile home's still not gonna be setback if we leave it there.
True, but it's an existing non-conforming, they're not creating a new property line that it is going to be in violation with. So, and, and those instances, we've.
So, that rear property line of track A2 is there today?
Sorry, that would be a five-foot setback, and there aren't, you mean the A1D from the mobile home?
Uh, the mobile home that's in track A2 that wasn't, that was in the servitude that is no longer a servitude, uh, that's a lot closer than five feet to that property line. The property line between track A2 and, and A1B.
It is existing in that, you know, that track A2 is not a part of this?
Right, so that exists, that's an existing property line at the back of A2 that the trailer is right up against.
Rather than wait ourselves down with a lot of discussion, I'd really like to see the plat that we're, we're supposed to be voting on.
I'm glad you said that, 'cause I'm sitting here thinking it, and this is two that we've had in a row, that the documentation we've got is not right.
Have you got the copy? I mean, Ms. Jackson has one, I don't know. Put it under the light there. Okay.
A little bit further.
Yeah.
Well, wait, can't they zoom it out?
I don't know.
Oh, you can?
I can. I don't see that, oh.
I'm getting dizzy, Ellen.
Oh, it got the other way.
You're gonna have to buy me a beer over this one, I can't see anymore.
The only thing that was added was this, uh, fifteen-foot servitude, like, running right in here, but this track is not a part of this subdivision, this, that was existing from before.
So, the original A1 went around A2?
Yes.
Okay.
You wanna see the reference?
No, I believe, it's just, that's strange.
Yeah.
It, 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 it kinda started, this was A1 and go, it went all the way around here like that.
Okay.
So.
Now, what did you say about the twenty-foot servitude of passage? I've, I've kinda lost.
Well, he was saying, like, right in here.
All right.
It just extended from here on across here, that's all.
But you do have a forty-foot servitude of passage that goes all the way back to?
Oh, yeah, it goes all the way from, from.
A1C, like our plat shows, okay.
Yes. They just had me extend this line right from here to here, that's it.
Track A2 and track A1 are open by Sidney Tuck, correct?
Track what?
Of track A2 and track A1A are both open by Mr. Sidney Tuck, you're general.
Yes.
Any questions, additional questions, comments? Need some more time, study? What is the wish of the commission?
I wanna make a comment about not having the, the updated plat. I'm not sure it's fair to Mr. Hollis that we approved this, but because track A2 is not a part of what we're looking at tonight, I think it's okay. So, um, I think it does meet the requirements of the ordinance, so I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve by Sherri Slimon, seconded by Commissioner Dalton. Any opposition?
Can I make a quick comment? Can you revise the motion to approve the plat that depicts the fifteen-foot drainage servitude on plat, on track A1B?
Hang on a second. I got a better question. On that revised plat, what's, does it have a date?
November eighteenth.
Like, um, there in the lower left corner, this says eleven-four, what does the revised one say, eleven-four, or does it have a different date?
Eleven-eighteenth. Eleven-eighteenth.
Eighteen.
There you go, that's.
What's yours say?
Mine was part of the same packet that you guys got, so it says eleven-four.
What does yours say as far as the date's concerned?
You pointing at me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Um, I have the same one that they've got. She had, gave me that copy that I handed to her a few minutes ago. Um, I know that we looked at the new one at, at staff, I can't tell.
Ellen, why don't you submit that one?
She, I know she submitted it prior to the deadline, um.
Oh, she did submit it prior to the deadline.
Yes.
The deadline was on a Monday.
Okay.
Thursday.
I just wanna make sure.
It may have something to do with Thanksgiving.
Clearly, there's a, there's a tracking issue. We've implemented a new system in our office where every item that comes into the building goes to the secretary, she logs it into our system, and then it gets transmitted to the reviewer. Stacy was out for a week, therefore, we were trying to play that role, and obviously, these two got missed, and I sincerely apologize, but what we're trying to do is create a system where we can track when something's come to the office, when it goes for review, when it goes for comment, when it comes to the commission. I, I don't have an explanation. I saw the reviewed plats, I didn't look in my packet prior to the meeting, so I didn't make a connection that they were not the same.
Okay.
Okay, so the eighteenth is the revised plat, so the motion should be revised to reflect the?
November eighteenth.
The eighteenth, okay.
All right, makes, makes sense, okay. Motion to approve the November eighteenth plat by Sherri Slimon, seconded by Howard Dalton. Any opposition?
I'm an object.
Michael Marshon, object. Any other objection? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, item eight C, public hearing, consider the simple division, David Brumfield property, lot six A1, six B2.
James Fowgo, representing the Brumfield family, on the following simple division with a variance. Uh, comments were made and addressed and corrected on the plat, asking the commission for approval.
James, do you know who lives in the trailer over?
Uh, their son.
It's, okay, it's a family member?
Yes, that's right.
Are we do, are we doing six A1 and six B1, or is it, the, the agenda says six B2? I'm trying to find six B2.
I think that's a typo.
It's six B1. Six A1, six. Okay, six A1, six B1.
Well, my concern is, okay, they're taking six B and six A. Okay, I see what they're doing.
It's two lots, and basically, they're pretty two lots, yeah.
Yeah, I think the title is on the paperwork, not the plat.
I drove out here today, and there's a lot of water out there today.
Well, it's a big pond, too.
Yeah. Um, staff's comment is that they're creating a hardship, and I have to, I personally would allow some leeway because of the pond. I don't, I don't see how you can split a pond between two people. I, um, I would be okay with this, I.
And the gentleman on the south property line, who's building the ha, big house to the rock, the property, he's actually planning on buying this piece. He wants, he can't, with the mortgage and everything like that, he can't tie it into aisle one, he has to keep it separate.
Any other comments, questions? If not, open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward, and you'll have three minutes to speak? No one wishing to comment, public hearing is closed. Any additional comments, questions? What is the wish of the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Michael Marshon, seconded by Bob Nance. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number eight D, Patrick Brazen Property, lots A1, A2, A2, A1, simple division.
Good evening, Clint Quinton Mall, representing WJ Quinton Mall surveyors, asking for planning commission approval in simple partition with a variance. All comments have been addressed and adjusted on the plat. This is actually an exchange of property, no new lots are being created, starting out with two and ending with two.
Questions, comments by commissioners?
We have a revised plat for this one, can you tell us what's different in the new one?
We have, um, the comments. This was actually reviewed twice, um, six months ago. Policy was, this was approved by a simple partition in-house, it's now policy that they come to the monthly meeting, so it was reviewed then, when we submitted it for the simple, and it's been reviewed again coming to, uh, this meeting here. The second, second, uh, set of comments was to show the side setbacks, five and twenty, uh, side and rear, of course, um. What was the base bearing? I think that was on the map prior to the base bearing. List of variances requested on the map, that is, the little note off to the right requesting a variance due to lack of public road frontage, and to designate the method and location of treated sewer affluent, and that is, then, the 12-foot utility servitude on the east side of Kenneth Michael Road.
Okay, thank you.
So, this revised plat that we have, that was, this was drawn up when? The one, the revised plat we were given tonight?
Whenever the deadline was that we submit for when they, you know, give us the...
Well, the reason I'm asking is because the original plat we have and the one they gave us tonight, both have the same date on them.
Mm-hmm. Sometimes, when originally submitted it back in September for the in-house process, was dated the 17th, there was a preliminary stamp put on the other one of 11/23/2009. But, yes, it does have the same date of 17/2009. I'll be happy to change that if you'd like.
Well, I'm just concerned we've had so much trouble tonight with plats being kept up with, and here the plat with the most recent handwritten date of 11/23/09, we're told is incorrect, and the replacement we're getting has a date that's earlier, we're told that's correct, so how do we know which piece of paper to really is correct, is my point?
Mm-hmm, I understand.
I have a question on the, in that 50-foot servitude passage, there's a 12-foot utility servitude that crosses that. What's that all about?
It's actually within it. Yes.
No, it runs perpendicular to the other utility servitude.
Oh, it has to cross over to get to lot A2, A1. For utilities to cross over, which is kind of common. Happens all the time. Matter of fact, there's one at, on lot C, on our side of A1A. It goes to lot B. That was already approved by the planning commission.
Any other questions, comments at this time? Hearing none, open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward? You'll have three minutes. No one wishing to comment? Public hearing is closed. Any additional comments, questions? What is, which is the commission?
I make a motion to approve based on it meeting the criteria for simple division, and also using this most recent plat that we received.
I'll second.
Here we have a motion by Steve Barrow to approve, seconded by Buddy Wells. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 8E, Howard K. Moore estate property, tracks B2A and B2B.
My name is David Moore, requesting simple division, approval of a simple division of track B2A, track B2B. Originally, it was a three-acre track. I want to divide two acres and one acre.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments, commissioners?
Well, I just see that staff, if you comments asked the question, is Magnolia Ridge Drive a right-of-way or a servitude? And I don't see any clarification there.
Those have been addressed on the plat. All the comments have been addressed, they just didn't...
The original Magnolia Ridge Drive call-out was for a right-of-way, but it wasn't accepted by the parish, and we asked them to verify, and it turned out it was a private access servitude, so that's why it's called out as such on there.
So, the plat is correct?
Right.
Any other comments, questions at this time? Open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and comment? Please do so, you'll have three minutes to speak. No one wishing to comment? Public hearing is closed.
I guess I just got to ask a, I guess, probably a question that isn't our purview, but how do you know, how do you know, I mean, how do you know that track B2B has the legal right to use Magnolia Ridge Drive if it's a private servitude or passage? It may dumb belong to you, it's outside your property. How do you know you have the right to use it? Huh?
Half of it is outside.
Why wouldn't I have the legal right to use it?
No, no, never mind, I stand corrected. I stand corrected. Because I was going to, I was going to ask you about the 12-foot utility servitude. I couldn't understand why angled up like that. The scale is very large compared to the scale that we've seen. Well, staff, I don't understand your recommendation there.
I think that generally, there's, there's an existing private servitude that fronts, that this lot fronts on. We're not creating any additional access servitudes, so therefore, it's, it sort of meets the criteria that we have today for this type of division.
Okay.
I agree. I think it meets the requirements, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
And a motion to approve by Sherri Sloman, seconded by Bob Nance. Any opposition? Motion carries. Item number nine, public hearing, consider an ordinance amending the following sections of the Ascension Parish subdivision regulations. Ricky, are you going to hand out? Thank you.
The proposed revisions to the regulations are based on a need to clarify or clean up the thing that we call simple, simple division with variance. We have simple division in the regulations, it's a very clearly defined means of subdividing property. At some point, simple division with variance came into being. It's sort of a Frankenstein of various regulation requirements, partly taken from parts of the subdivision regulations, some of it from the family partition variance section in the regulations. So, in order to clean, clean that up, to continue to allow people to subdivide property in a way similar to what has been accepted, but be within the realm of what the code describes, the changes in here bring some, simple division with variance under the umbrella of major-minor subdivision process, but add the flexibility in there for these small, simple division, family partitions basically, without family ties, which have been basically what simple division with variance has been. And just as an aside, this is kind of the first run-through, something to put out there for questions, comments, to get people thinking. Staff plans on meeting with surveyors, engineers, and the parish to kind of go through this again and get their ideas to help make this better. But this is our first run-through, bringing it before you to kind of get it out there and get your questions and comments, and kind of get us moving in the right direction for getting, getting that aspect of the code cleaned up.
So, we're not asking for a motion tonight, correct?
Correct. That's my understanding.
Just the introduction.
The motion would be just to send it back for more review, back to the subcommittee for more review, and then to bring it back after it's been looked at two, three more times, to say, we think this is where it needs to be before it goes forward. We created a bullet list of sort of, I guess, six of the big-ticket items in these revisions, and we can run through those real quick. What sort of happened was, we got to a point where we wanted to define, you know, we heard it tonight, we have Ricky Babbins' interpretation of how do we accept private roads. We said, in order to get this to a better place, we need to codify it. So, we've created language of how to accept private roads into the parish maintenance system. We're working right now to get that language tweaked and massaged in such a way that we think the council will like it, and we can move forward on that. Well, that created this trickle, that we said, well, if we have a better way to accept private roads into the parish maintenance system, can we reevaluate the subdivision regulations in such a way that we can start to reduce some of these private access servitudes that we never want to accept into the parish maintenance system unless, as a staff, we see that they're part of an overall road network system, and we think they need to have a wider right-of-way, and then we can make those suggestions. So, you know, just running through our list real quick in numerical order, we revised the family partition definition, we removed the word heirs. We think that heirs implies Joe. You know, if my mom dies and gives her land to some guy, he can utilize the family partition rules, even though he's not part of the family. That's the reason we removed that language. We just felt that the family partition language should deal specifically with family, and if Joe inherits land from my mother, Joe should use this other set of rules we've created, the simple division with a variance sort of thing. We've reduced the number of lots that we allow to be created now in simple divisions, family partitions, and simple division with a variance. Today, we allow nine lots. It's our opinion, based on a lot of discussions we've been having with the master plan, that we're going to continue to overburden our traffic, our drainage, our public works, our fire and police, if we continue to allow properties to subdivide without having more input. And so, by reducing it from nine to five, we think we're taking a baby step to what other parts of the country does, which is, they don't allow that. You can't divide property that's not on a public road in parts of the country because physically it can't be served. So, by going from nine to five, we think we're creating an improved situation there. The next one is 31.102, when you're required to obtain a 60-foot right-of-way. There's, there's some language in our code today that says, if you're going to subdivide a piece of property, you've got to look at the road that it's fronting on, and if that road doesn't meet a certain set of criteria, you've got to go out and acquire right-of-way before we will allow you to subdivide your property. We're changing that language to be, right now, it's, if the road is not 18 feet of asphalt, we're changing that to say, if the road that you're fronting on does not meet parish standards. So, it's basically trying to add another level of protection in there, that we don't keep subdividing property on substandard roadways, because the roads can't take it, and that's putting that burden on the rest of us to improve those roads, to take on all these extra lots that we're creating. 31.103, we're creating a 30-foot servitude. That gets back to our road acceptance criteria. It's our belief that if we set standards for when you subdivide your five lots, up to five lots, that we only need a 30-foot servitude of access to serve those five lots. But what we're doing is we're creating a standard for the surface width, the surface material, the depth, what that driveway has to be built like so that fire trucks can get down it and serve those houses that may be on fire, and in today's situation, they could be down a substandard road that the fire truck simply cannot drive down. And then, lastly, family partition servitude width, reducing or changing from 20, 40, 50, or 60, based on the number, just to say a flat 30, and that 30-foot servitude's going to meet the criteria that we establish. Those are the big points, and what started out as a trickle turned into a waterfall, because as we started getting into the subdivision regulations, there's lots of inconsistencies, lots of language discrepancies, lots of things that cause confusion when you try to evaluate what does it mean to create a minor subdivision versus a major subdivision, and things like that. And please, eat this thing up. Use your red ink and tell us what you like, what you don't like, so that as we take this through the next and the next and the next iteration, we get something like our drainage ordinance that is starting to get where we want it to go. And we know our drainage ordinance is coming back to you guys. The first quarter of next year, we have more revisions, because we've been reevaluating it and understanding what works and what doesn't work. The subdivision regulations need to overhaul, and this is the first step.
If I may, as a suggestion, because I don't know how else to put this, what I would like to see is just an individual when reviewing a document, I like to see it when it's done using Microsoft Word, where you can have the markups on the side, it's read, and it gives you the history of what was changed, the tracking and so forth. Because right now, when I read this, I have nothing to compare it to, to the original document. You understand what I'm saying?
Right. Where, here we are, this process started about four months ago. You guys have in your hands a new copy of the land development code that this format isn't in. So, over the course of the next four weeks, we're going to take all of these revisions and apply them to our new land development code, and we're going to track the changes like that, so that you can use your new book and see where we're making these changes. So, it's not an oversight on our part, this started four months ago, and the land development code is just now getting finished.
Well, you got to crawl before you can run, but you understand my point?
No, I understand. We didn't want to go through the process of changing this when we're just in this first stage and say, yeah, let's redo that, let's reinvent the wheel before we're there. But, yeah, we're going to get there.
Are you going to come back to us after you talk to some of the other entities like the developer, I'm not developers, surveyors?
It's, it's our intention to take this to the developers and the surveyors and the engineers, probably in the first part of January, so that at the end of January, we can take it back to the subcommittee and show you guys what the responses were. And then, if we want to bring it back for public hearing, maybe we do that in February or March.
Very good, thank you, Ricky. No other comments, questions? Move on to item number 10. Is that right? Committee reports subdivision ordinance committee.
We met the first part of December, we did not meet in November, and then our next meeting is, we're not going to meet again this month, so we will meet the end of, excuse me, the end of January, the last Friday of the month. We're going to continue working on this, like Ricky said. We've been working on this for months, or actually for years, I think, but we're just going to continue working on it and hopefully get a product out soon.
Thank you. Old Business Gateway Industrial Park, second filing, parts 1, 2, 3.
Taylor Grabow, representing the Superstore Holdings. We're requesting an extension to a previously approved preliminary plat, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
I called staff today and asked why you were asking for an extension, and you still have another year before you need it. Do you want to explain to us why?
This, this original plat was approved in November of 2008, and as I, as I understand from talking to staff and reading the ordinance, you basically have 24 months to start construction, and we're 12 months into that process. And, you know, I don't have to tell any of you guys that we've experienced a collapse in the real estate market. So, looking ahead, we want an additional 12 months, because the construction time on a project like this is eight months, you know? So, we, so essentially, we would have four months to begin to prepare for construction. So, and, and right now, the real estate market is just not conducive to flood the market a lot more lots, so we'd like another 12 months to analyze the market and, and be in a position to build when the time is right.
Okay, thank you. Comments, questions? What is the wish of the commission?
I'd like to know why the staff didn't make a recommendation regarding approval or denial. I'd like to know why the staff didn't make a recommendation regarding approval or denial.
To be honest, staff is on the fence. We don't have anything in our ordinances that talk about this, and this is something we're working on, is how do you issue extensions on projects that haven't expired, aren't close to being expired? It's not, our code is specifically vague with regards to that, and so we're working on language that puts it in there that says, here's the criteria you must meet to be given an extension. It's not in there, so it's sort of, can go either way. I mean...
Okay. That's what I, I was just curious. Well, can legal offer any light on this?
Without anything in the code, and no precedence to go by, I mean, I can't offer an opinion.
I'd ask.
[laughing].
This is just one of those things where you almost have to, it's a feeling of the commission. You bait, you know, you go ahead and take what's presented to you, and you say, okay, well, I understand where you're coming from, and I agree with you or I disagree with you. Yeah, I understand the deal with the real estate market, but I mean, six months from now, something could change, too. At the same time, what, if you get into a definition of construction, I went out that way the other day, and I've seen that you've done nothing. There's no, no construction has started. But at the same time, couldn't something have gotten started, or moved a little bit of dirt? Do something, because at one time, there had been some developments that argued that they started construction just by moving some dirt. Something, you know, something could have been done, too. So...
To answer that question, I've talked to the staff and actually asked that question, what is the definition of construction? And what I was told is that the definition of construction is actually requesting a first, a first field inspection of some public improvement, like drainpipe or sewerpipe. So ideally, yes, we could have cleared the property or grubbed it and scraped off the dirt, maybe even done some dirt work, but under the current ordinance, I don't think that was qualified as actual construction, because none of those things would have required an inspection by a DPW. And, you know, my clients have a pretty substantial investment in getting it through the initial stage of drainage study, you know, traffic study, preliminary plat, and we just, I don't want to see that effort be lost by time expiring on us. You know, there's just not much appetite right now for real estate, and we would like some more time to analyze the market, and like I said, build when the time is right. So a project like this probably takes eight months to build, so if you kind of back into it, you know, we would essentially have to start in February to get this thing completed before time expired.
Well, my concern is this, the 24-month time window was established for a reason. So now time's running along, and somebody says, well, give us another 12 months, why not ask for 24? I mean, you're looking at 36, 48 months. My point is, you're not coming up against your expiration date. I don't see any reason to grant an extension at this time, and I'm concerned about that we could be setting some sort of precedent that would undermine the 24-month original condition. And if they were, if you were running out of time, I mean, if you start construction next year, and you're going to run out, I mean, you come back and get an extension at that point in time. I don't see any need to grant an extension right now, because you're saying, we might have a problem. You don't have a problem at this point in time. So I'm kind of against granting just a blanket extension for no good and valid reason.
Yeah, and you don't have to be finished the project in 24 months, you just have to start it. You could start it on 23 months' level, you know.
And that's one reason why we limited...
But it doesn't have to be completed. No.
And that's why we limited our request to only 12 months. I don't, we don't want an indefinite extension, we just want an additional 12 months.
But at the same time, you're coming to us now for 12 months, and what happens in a year? Well, we'd like to get another year's extension. So where does it stop?
I understand that position, and, you know, unfortunately, I don't, you know, I don't know what's going to happen in a year from now, but at this time, we're just asking for 12 months.
But we can look at the code and fix the code to handle this in the future. So I hate to hold the economy against a developer. If, it's not anyone's fault what has happened, but a lot of people are suffering from it. And if I was the financial backing behind someone, if I thought, if I didn't know someone was going to have it approved, you know, be approved, I don't know that I would want to give them money, so...
Well, my point here is, the original plat was done on November 2008, so we're a year into this, it's now basically, call it December 2009. They've got 13 months, basically, from now or whatever.
But if you're a bank, are you going to loan millions of dollars to develop it?
You know, I have to tell you, you know, I commend the applicant for at least being progressive enough to think ahead of a time and come before us and say, I'm not here in a crisis mode, my, you know, my approval isn't going to expire next month. You know, from a practical perspective, I think Commissioner Simon, you're 100% correct. I mean, if you're going to shop a project like this and hope to get financing, you know, they're going to want to know that this project has all the permits in place and all the approvals in place, and that they're secured. And it takes time to do that, especially in this environment. I really don't have an issue with granting the request. I mean, I think it's, I think it's commendable that he's thinking ahead, and, you know, and there's a lot of debate as to exactly how fast we're getting out of this so-called recession. You know, and 12 months will happen faster than we can blink, and if he's looking to get financing, you know, the banks are probably asking him, how much time do you have? And if he's only got 13 months, and they know that he can't get it built that fast, they're going to raise questions.
But see, that's the point, he doesn't have to have it built, he has to start construction.
But the banks don't know that, and the banks don't necessarily pay attention to what the rules say, the banks have their own rules, you know.
But there again, Julio, if he was starting construction, he would have already had the money in place when this was okay a year ago, so...
Well, but why do it? If no one's going to buy your lots, why go to all the effort and spend all the money? There's many, many subdivisions out there right now that are sitting empty, or...
I'm not disagreeing. I'm just, you know, making a point, you know, that, you know, if the timeline, when this was, when it came before, or came before the commission, and it was approved and given the 24 months, if financing was an issue, it would have been addressed then. Because, I mean, this mess that the economy we're in, we didn't get in overnight.
Well, I appreciate applicant that's proactive as opposed to reactive that we've had in the last few meetings. So based on that, I'm going to make a motion to approve the 12-month extension.
I'm going to second that.
I have a motion to grant the one-year extension by Steve Barrow, seconded by Commissioner Dumas. Any opposition?
Objection.
I object.
Objection.
So we got Commissioner Wells, Commissioner Marshon objects, Commissioner Nance, hang on, hang on. Not now.
Self with.
And Mr. Dalton.
Four.
All in favor. Slimon, Dumas, and Barrow. All right. So motion fails. Okay, now you can speak, because we didn't do anything.
Denied, basically.
We've denied it, but I mean, we didn't approve the motion.
The motion failed, so it's not approved.
So nothing to prove.
Ed Rottenberg, part of Superstore Holdings and partner Paul Voorhees, I mean, I appreciate this, the hearing and discussion, and everybody has good comments. I guess my only comment with Ms. Slimon was mentioning, and several people that supported her, is that, you know, we purchased the land, we're not in a panic mode, we're rushing over to do it, we're trying to be proactive and take our time, it's a major project. I mean, we own the adjoining thing, Gateway, it's extremely well-maintained, it's not this, I don't want to be rude, stuff on Highway 30 that has terrible access, I mean, we're doing it professional and nice, and just the right to eight-month to 12-month process of development in the streets and the banking financing is very difficult. So we own a lot of property there, we've been great neighbors, we have a nice development, and just to ask for the potential extension, instead of coming in a panic in 11 months from now, doing it now, seems very reasonable, and we're not asking anything different, it's just an extension. We had met with Mr. Marshon before a year ago, and we're still talking with the highway, and it's just a lot to do. It's not just a little two-acre street that's not impressive, so to, I would certainly recommend you, I don't know how it works, to reconsider that we're asking an extension of what was already approved. We're not trying to change it, change the left turn, you know, we're not doing anything, we're just looking for a little more time, because we want to do it right. And if you go by and look at Gateway, you'll see a beautiful park that's cut every day, it's a lot nicer than 90% of the stuff that's near you, and all the buildings are occupied and leased, but, you know, that's not the same as developing 85 acres on a little one street, and it takes time to do it right. So I would like to either reconsider or come back, whatever we do, but I think, it wasn't a public hearing, so we weren't able to talk, but, you know, we've done a lot over there, and it's very nice, and that's our intention to can do it, but to have 11 months to say, finish or start, it's a lot more easy, it's not that easy.
Okay. I think we get it.
Consider that.
All right.
Well, here's a point, I'm Paul Voorhees, I'm the other owner. And here's the thing, that if we started today, we're probably looking at five years to build it out. So you've already approved us, and you're going to, what you've approved is going to take us five years to finish. If we start in a year, or two years, it's going to just take us one more year. You've already approved, I don't understand what the dilemma is, since it's not going to be done overnight, even if we started today, it's not going to be finished, it's going to take us years to build out this subdivision. We occupy, we actually build out more of the lots than we sell, that's just, that's kind of how we do it, so it takes a long time. So you're either looking at six years from today or five years from today, I don't see the difference. But if you yank our permit, and we have to start over, that puts us, we're probably 50, 60,000 with his firm, just to get here tonight, and we've already got a couple of million in the land, so, and we're not throwing up trash, we're putting in a $300,000 turn lane. I just don't see how this is a negative for the parish. And if you just go look at what's already out there, it's a quality project, and this is going to be adjacent to a quality project. I would think you'd want to encourage us to build it.
Let me, just for the record, just to correct you on something, the time that we're talking about is your time to call for your first inspection.
I know, and we could trick you by moving some dirt, and we're just...
No, 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 moving dirt isn't going to cut it.
We're not out here, we're not trying to slip one by you and go move, you know, a little bit of dirt and call for a permit. We're trying to do everything above board, and we hired a professional company to represent us. I just can't believe that we can't, that this isn't exactly what you'd like to see built here.
And one other point I'd like to make, before you guys reconsider, is, you know, we've been dealing with DOTD over the past year on the traffic, how to work the turn lane, how to make that work within a development, and the access issues. And we've been back and forth with DOTD three or four times, and during the discussions with them, you know, we looked at different layouts on the subdivision that could have changed. I think we're to the point to where we can build what y'all approved and what we want to build, so that has kind of hindered the process and, you know, and held us up as well.
All right. Thank you. Any other further discussion?
Well, I've got a couple of comments I want to make. I'm hearing two stories here. The first story that was presented to us was, well, we can't do it right now, because we're not sure it's going to be economically viable, the economy's bad. Now I'm hearing, well, we're working with DOTD, we're doing all this stuff, so, one, which story is the truth? But my, the point I really want to try to make here is, this is something that's been approved, and, but my point is, you don't have a problem, you're asking for an extension of something that is not a problem at this point in time. And it's not like you're going to lose your permit if it's not built out by the drop-dead date. That's a date that you have to start construction. So my point is, and I'm going to go with support staff on this, I don't see that there's a problem, so therefore, I don't think an extension should be granted at this point in time. And that's why I take it, the position I'm taking is, I'm not against the development, I'm saying that there's not a problem on the table. There's nothing to address until there is a problem.
And I guess my comment to that would be, it just so happened that those things happened simultaneous, that we had problems with DOTD we had to work out, and in the meantime, the economy was tanking in the real estate market. So, you know, those things just kind of happened simultaneous, and we had no control over that. To start construction, as I said, we had to deal with DOTD, because we had to do some improvements on LA 30. Based on those improvements, it made us look back at our internal street layout, and we potentially could have changed that and may have submitted a revised preliminary plat. We're at the point now, through discussions with DOTD, where I think we can build what you guys approved a year ago, make you guys happy with y'all approval, and satisfy DOTD. And it has taken six to eight months for that discussion to come full circle, and DOTD agreed us to get comfortable to meet y'all approval. So over the last year, we haven't been sitting idle, saying, we just won't watch and wait. We've been working through our issues with DOTD in order to get something that we could build. And then now, now we're at that point, we're seeing that our time's, you know, coming up on us, and we haven't started construction plans because of DOTD, you know, that's probably a four- to six-month process, and we have an eighth-month construction time. So if you add those together, you're a year. So that's the reason why now, we're asking for only a 12-month approval on our previously approved plat.
You said the time, and then the 12-month construction time. So what do you mean by construction time? Are you talking about to start construction or to finish?
I'm talking, like, right now, we have not drawn any construction plans, because we've been in discussions with DOTD. For our firm to draw construction plans, that's probably, and for the parish to approve them, that's probably a four- to six-month process, which would put us into June of 2010. We probably have a two-to-three-month bidding period, where they would take bids, analyze the bids, and award it to a successful contractor, that'd probably put us into August or September, and then start construction. And with, to start construction is defined as requesting a first inspection.
And that's assuming, of course, that throughout the process of getting your permits and your approval, nothing changes, that you'd have to go back to get your Army Corps to sign off, or anybody else sign off.
Assuming you have no snacks.
Because just your 404 permit, it's a year to 14 months long. And that's just, that's normal, that's standard. You know, and again, I'll go back to my comment that I made earlier, and I'm going to try again, you know, one more time. You know, I heard the comments regarding the financing, and I'm sensitive to the economy. I think Commissioner Slimon said it very, very well, I mean, it's a reality out there that funding for things like this is very difficult to get. But having personal knowledge of what it takes to get all of the permits in place before you can turn a spade and actually get dirt, you know, if they're here a year ahead of time, and they haven't drawn drawings, and what have you, they're going to be here in a crisis mode, asking us for an extension, and I, and I, I'm frankly grateful that they're having this open discussion with us, and telling us ahead of time, hey, we're not going to make our deadline 11 months from now, 12 months from now, whatever time it is that we've got left. I think it's commendable that they're coming here and says, look, these are the steps that we have to do, we're not going to be, we're not going to be able to go under construction before the deadline's up. We'd appreciate it if you gave us the time we need to be under construction, and they're only asking for 12 months.
Well, Commissioner Dumas, if they came in here with a timeline, plan, and said, this is where we're at, blah, 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 had all directions in the block, and asked for an extension, I might view it differently, within that they're here with nothing, and they're saying, we don't think we can make it, we haven't done it, we haven't done any construction, and they don't know when their, what their timeline is going to be. In fact, they just aren't, they don't have a firm commitment. So my point is, and they may find out, a year from now, they don't want to do this. So I mean, they don't have a firm timeline that you just described, that would be well and good if they did, but they don't.
No, in the one factor that I don't think they can put down in a firm timeline is, is when is financing going to become available for projects such as this? You know, we did, there's just no, this, you know, they're telling us where they are today, there's no guarantee that they won't be here 11 months. Like I said earlier, there's a lot of debate as to exactly how fast we're getting out of this recession. I hope we get out of it a lot faster than it appears, to me, anyway, and I'm no economist, but the reality of it is, is that I think, you know, we've been, according to some folks, we've been in a recession for a hell of a lot longer than a year, okay? And I think there's a reality that we've got a lot of projects out there that haven't been able to get funding, and I think it's egregious on the, on the parish's position, in our position, to simply say, oh, we don't care about the economy, too bad, come back to us again. And... And just on that merit alone, I think there's enough justification and a warrant to be considered and say, you know what, let's be proactive about this. Let's not be reactive at the 11th hour. I mean, I don't, you know, a lot of stimulus packages have come out there, but none of them for real estate development.
But Julio, on the same argument, we just turned down the First National Bank on an extension, and it was, their excuse was because of the economy. And we, you know, we're kind of, if we approve this right now, I'd like to see some more information.
I'll take exception to that because I don't think we heard the application. I think we just barraged the poor guy, but that's neither here nor there.
That was the first time. Second time, he got plenty of time to speak.
Well, Julio, you make mention of the economy. The arguments I've heard here tonight weren't so much about the economy. They were talking about DOTD, this and that, trying to get all this stuff done. But again, I want to reiterate just my point, and then I'll shut up. There's no crises. If they come for six months ahead of time and say, look, this is what we've done, dah, 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 then I would say they've got a legitimate reason to ask for a 12-month extension. Not, I don't see a legitimate need for an extension at this point in time.
I guess I'm grateful that somebody's managing our expectations a little bit better than that and not coming to us in a reactionary mode, you know, and I think that's...
But who's to say if they came to us in July or August or September, they'd be in panic mode? It would still be a proactive action on their part, wouldn't it? It's the people, it's the people that show up when the deadline has expired or after that are reacting. Right now, they still have enough time where something could change and move them along a little quicker. We don't know. It'd be nice if we all had a crystal ball that would tell us what's going to happen. But we don't have that.
Okay.
Now you know why staff is sitting on the fence on this issue too.
Well, I think staff, I think you're sitting on the fence, as you mentioned earlier, because the code doesn't really give you any clear direction of which way to go.
Well, why don't we get a legal opinion whether this is something we can even do?
No, we can do it.
We can grant an extension, or we don't have to.
I think we have authority to either grant it or not.
Do you have the right to grant it?
No, yeah.
I mean, y'all can do whatever you want. Is it legal? And the problem that you're going to run into later is, we have 12 applications like this every week. You're going to have to set some kind of precedence and follow the same thing, as was mentioned. And I hate to be like that because I'm sensitive to the economy also. But if you start doing this now, it is a precedence, and you will have to justify every time why you don't do it or why you do do it and make sure it's clear on the record.
That's my argument, that there's not, there's no solve a problem until it exists.
In that case, and, you know, thank you, Legal. Then in that case, I'd like to make a motion to defer it for 60 days. And what I would ask Commissioner Sloman, if she would get with staff under her subcommittee and try to come up with at least something that we could talk about.
Well, and we've already started working on this because we knew it was coming up. We talked about it in this month's meeting. So can we do another motion? Because the other motion has already been approved.
No.
Just failed. Simply failed.
Okay.
So my motion is to defer for 60 days and ask the planning subcommittee to look into something with legal and staff, and then we bring it back in the February hearing.
I'll second that. I think that's a good way to try to address this.
All right, I have a motion to defer for 60 days by Julio Dumas, seconded by Commissioner Dalton. Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay, the item for executive session, Ms. Falterman says we do not need that, so that... Taken off. I'm sorry. And one final note, Mr. Compton, would like to make a comment.
I just want to tell our staff engineer congratulations on the birth of his new baby Sunday. Harper Elizabeth Laurie was born, and so now we have a new father on the staff. So congratulations, Ben.
What are you doing here?
Not changing diapers.
Congratulations, Ben.
Congratulations.
All right, item 13.
Motion.
We adjourn, we adjourn. And 10 minutes, we'll reconvene and zoning.